Mrs. Mock.
Here.
Mr. Porter.
Here.
Mr. Sherwood.
Here.
Mrs. Smack.
Here.
Pledge of Loyal Lesions, please.
Pledge of Loyal Lesions. To the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Harold, want to read the mission statement?
The vision and mission statement of the Austintown Schools. The Austintown Local School District is a united community with a proud legacy and a progressive approach to education. We provide an inspiring education that strengthens and prepares our students for unlimited future opportunities.
Agenda approval. Upon the recommendation of the Treasurer, approve the agenda for the April 28, 2022 Board of Education Regular Session.
Second.
Mrs. Mock.
Yes.
Mrs. Smack.
Yes.
Mr. Markham. Mr. Porter.
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood.
Number six, student recognition. We're going to start with Leslie Buscico and Alyssa Ruggles, the Young Women with Bright Future Scholarship Program for the YMCA.
Good afternoon, everybody. It's not even on. Good afternoon, everybody.
Yes.
I'd love to just call my counselors at Fitch High School. It is my honor and pleasure today to recognize Alyssa Ruggles through one of our outstanding seniors here at Fitch High School. On September, I granted Alyssa the opportunity to participate in the YFCA Young Women with Bright Future Scholarship Program. She was chosen for this program and it was given to her by faculty. For September until March, she was participating in two four-hour workshops at Howard and other non-lead service scholarships. On top of being able to contribute to that aid and community service project, helping YFCA get help with personal hygiene products. On March 19, Alyssa won the entire scholarship for the Young Women with Bright Future in Tompkins County, totaling $12,000. She also awarded a $1,000 scholarship and four of her classes were on Howard Women. In the 16 years that I expect to come from here, Alyssa was very fortunate to be awarded this scholarship, which is amazing. After graduation, Alyssa will be attending Young Southeastian for a degree in engineering, where she has also accepted a co-op tour to Ohio Park. She was also awarded the Princeton Scholarship, the Honors College Scholarship, and she will have her scholarship called American Southeastian. And extremely, but her award has been nominated by the National Association of Young Women. Thank you for a round of applause.
Thank you. Congratulations, Alyssa. Next up, girls wrestling. Eric Defenderfer is the coach. He has Mel Henry and Reagan Code with him.
Good evening. I'm one of the new wrestling coaches here in Austintown. This year we have a safety plus wrestlers in our team, and we'll be no wrestlers in this program. They didn't roll. Mel and Reagan are both in sixth grade, who also had two other girls in their wrestling issue for the first year. Even though they're first year coming on sixth grade, they have tremendous background in the hard parts and it really helped them a lot and contributed to a lot of their successes. I would say the rest of their success was in hard work. You know, they're female and using a male dominant sport. They worked harder than I worked and most of the boys in the room, and it clearly paid off. And all the years of coaching had been on the experience. You go somewhere and I was like, oh, I got arrested for it. And it did not bother them, they did. They beat a lot of tough competitions, a lot of boys that had five, six years' experience. And, you know, their parents can be set like, that's this, when they walk out and that, there's mine. We're also bringing knowing the background of the boy pack and aiming to pull this through. We refer to them as wrestlers. They're not girls, they're not boys, they can be aggressive, and they'll let you know that as well. Both girls competed at the OEC Girls State Tournament, that was at the Pellet Center in Austintown. Reagan was our runner-up and Mel placed third, which is our first place that we had at the state tournament at Pellet. Both girls also placed in the Knox Tournament. The Knox Tournament is supposed to be for wrestlers with only one, two years' experience, but unfortunately a lot of people lie when they go to that. So the state, they placed at the state tournament, it was not really the Knox Tournament. Reagan was the state runner-up there and Mel was our state champ at the Knox State Tournament. Reagan also went on to, I request, a state tournament where she was a champion in the boys' division. And I think both women have a bright future in wrestling and looking forward to seeing what they can accomplish. Thanks for that.
Thank you. Next up, we're going to have the Woods Skilled Trades Class, the Arbors for the 9/11 Memorial Park. James Fisher. I'll let you introduce your students if they're here. Okay.
Hi, I'm Jim Fisher, this is Robert Iggleston from the, I always get this wrong, Educational Service Center of Eastern Ohio. We run the program, pre-apprenticeship program for skilled trades. What that means is, pre, is before apprenticeship program. It's a two-year program. Our students can go through it. We do everything from starting out with basically making cutting boards and tables. We use no screws, no nails, it's all by joinery and glue. Once we get done with that, we step up and we start doing projects. We did the arches for Mr. Swager back there for 9/11 Memorial. I don't know if you've seen it on the news, we had a little spot in the bendy. Boys really liked into it. I have a couple of young ladies in there, they like getting into some other things. They finish some glue tables. The list of stuff we've done is, our OTC, we built all our wooden drill rifles, cut them all out with jigsaws and sanded and did all that. We've fixed several chairs for the media center since some of our young students don't know how to sit on all four legs and they want to rock around on it, so we get some true homeschool work there on that. We just started taking on the kitchens up in the Home Ec area, on the second floor of the high school. Everything has been donated. And we got another donation coming tomorrow, some more floor tile. We're going to do tile on the floors, we're going to put backsplash up, redoing all the counters, we're making a butcher block counter. Oh, there's a big cutting board and they're kind of enjoying that. Replacing all the cabinet doors, they were flat panel doors. We're sanding down the main cabinets, keeping them because they're really in good shape, and we're making raised panel doors. If you know what that is, is you get the side and the middle of it pops up a little bit for you, it looks pretty. Okay? Also, we can get approval, we're going to try to do some plumbing in there. We will not mess with electricity. And we're putting dividers between the kitchens. Hopefully we'll have that done by next spring, because we have three kitchens to work on. In the future, we're going to, next year, we're going to build a 10 by 12 shed, we're going to do some dog houses, chicken coops, firewood shed, and complete the kitchens. What the purpose of all this is, is getting them to use every tool we have. There's not one of my students that can't walk in that shop and tell you what a tool does, how to use it, and they flow, it's fluid. If you ever have the pleasure of coming in and hanging out with me, you'll see they, oh, they're just nice and they come to me to troubleshoot, but most of the time they have it before I have a chance to tell them. And they help each other. I brought Mr. Iggleston up here, I want him to explain to you exactly what the program does. He has all the vague words on it, and I didn't want to stutter because I'm not really good at this.
I'm the lead career counselor at the Educational Service Center of Eastern Ohio. Last year, working with the Builders Association and other building trades in the area, we tried to find a way to get kids more interested in the building trades. So we kind of had this idea of, let's get in the classrooms a little bit more. So what we did is, we essentially took the shop classes that some of the schools had and we made them an exploration into the building trades. So in Austintown, I'd like to say this, they were one of the first schools to jump on this. And Jim doesn't give himself enough credit, but I work in a lot of different school districts and his shop class is top-notch, through and through. So what we've done is, we've set a four-year path for these students. They can go in their first and second year to the Woods 1 and 2 classes, if they decide this is something they look to go into, they can take the next two years and earn a full pre-apprenticeship with direct entry into the carpenters apprenticeship. What we've done as well is, we've linked other apprenticeships to this where they're recognizing it. We've had the roofers come in, we've had bricklayers, tile setters, we have HVAC, who is it, the plumbers and pipe fitters are going to come in and come work on a welding shop for you all as well. So these are all things that students that go to Austintown Fitch are going to be able to go to right in their home school. It's just like a regular class, 40, 50 minutes, right through their day. One of the great things about it is, we're bringing these people from the outside community to come in and hire these students directly from these classrooms. Our program, you know, in working with Austintown so far, $18,000 in grants so far to help launch these and the improvement of the classroom. Students that go through this, what they earn is they'll earn 20 total credential points for industry-recognized credentials. They earn one industry-recognized credential seal. And this program, what he's doing will actually count as an optional pathway towards graduation. So if a student isn't meeting the new permanent graduation, the long-term graduation requirements, what will be able to happen is, a student will be able to use the work they've done in his class, the pre-apprenticeship certificate, and the certificates for the Building Trades book list that they do, as a way for them to graduate. So we're looking at increasing the graduation rate with that as well. They're part of a consortium with 14 other school districts in the tri-county area, and I'll say it again, he doesn't give himself enough credit, but it is the top-notch one in the area. So, thank you all.
Thank you. Sure. Sam Swager is here. I just want to acknowledge him, he actually reached out, you can stand up, Sam. He actually reached out to our trades class and got all of this started, so thank you. Public comments, there are none today?
Robotics.
Oh, robotics, I'm sorry. Robotics. Andy? I'm sorry.
We're forgettable.
No, you're not.
More often than not, we are forgotten. Just so you know, we're Falco Tech First Robotics Competition Team 3193. We have been a part of this school system for 13 years. 100% of the funds for our program come from us fundraising and grants that we go out and we get on ourselves. We are a $35,000 a year program that we get our own funding for. We try very hard and have actually been successful at making sure that none of our students have to pay to be a part of our program, whether it's in kindergarten or a senior in high school. Our accomplishments, we were not here last year, we weren't able to meet last year, an accomplishment that happened last year that I'm very proud of and Olivia should be as well. We won the Regional Chairman's Award. The Regional Chairman's Award is the most prestigious award at first, and it honors the team that best represents a model for other teams to emulate and embodies the mission of FIRST. It was created to keep the central focus of First Robotics Competition, the ultimate goal of transforming the culture in ways we inspire greater levels of respect in honor of science and technology, as well as encouraging more of today's youth to become science and technology leaders. This year, we competed at the Finger Lakes Regional in Rochester, New York, where we finished 14th out of 37 teams. We were selected by the number seven alliance, we competed in the quarterfinals, lost in the quarterfinals to the alliance that ultimately won the event. We also won the Industrial Design Award for the robot, and that award is sponsored by General Motors. Then we competed at the Buckeye Regional at CSU. We ranked 18th out of 59 teams. We were picked by the number five alliance captain, and we lost in semifinals to the team that ultimately won the event. This year, our participation in all of our programs from kindergarten through 12th grade, we had FLL Explore, we had six teams with 36 students from kindergarten through 3rd grade. We had two teams of 10 students from 4th to 6th grade in FLL Challenge. We had two teams of 15 students in 7th and 8th grade competing in our FTC competition. And then we had our FRC team that was 15 students, grade 8 through 12. In the last year, we've competed in, we have completed community service, which includes Silly Science Sunday, the Jen Powers Memorial Polo Tournament, events at the Great Lakes Science Center. We have used our T-shirt cannon at football games, volleyball games, soccer games, as well as the Youngstown Phantom Hockey Games. We have hosted and participated in virtual First Lego League and FTC events. We helped host the, an FRC offseason event last year in Warren and hope to do the same here in Austintown this year. I would like to recognize our seniors that were on the team this year, most of which who have been with me since they were in 6th grade and doing Lego League. Olivia Franklin, Stevie Pateras, Emma George, Jonathan Winston, Jack Kovacs, Thomas Petritus, Courtney Gunter, Carly Crawford, and Trevor Zwick. And lastly, I'd like to thank our mentors. We are mentored by three volunteers, myself, Mike Malott, who is our lead mentor, and Bill McKinney. And thank you so much for inviting us here today. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, there are no public comments. We're going to move on to building reports. Austintown Elementary School, Mr. Burney.
Hi, everybody. Three things to share about Austintown Elementary School. First of all, we just completed our application for PBIS recognition. It's just an application that you have to turn in with a comprehensive system of behavioral supports that you fill out. The bottom line is, in our language, is how are we helping young people when it comes to mental health and behaviors so that it can increase academic performance? We're hoping to earn the bronze medal, so stop right there. You're thinking, why did he say bronze? Well, because we're a first-year school, put in an application, so you're only eligible for the bronze medal beginning next year and thereafter, we can seek to earn the silver or gold. So we're really excited about that and it'll be submitted tomorrow. The next thing is, starting next week and the week after, we will be taking care of testing to see what the end-of-the-year growth is for all of our K1 and 2 kids. One of the tests is called DIBELS, that's just an acronym, and the other is I-Ready. The bottom line is, it focuses on literacy skills and as well as monitoring math and reading to see how we're doing from beginning, middle, and end-of-the-year growth. And then finally, we want to give a shout-out to no longer Mrs. Holly Welch, but Dr. Holly Welch, who just recently earned her doctoral degree in educational leadership. So we're really excited about everything going on at the K1, 2 building, and thank you.
Thanks. Austintown Intermediate School, Mr. Papagallo.
We just finished up air testing today. Huge thank you to Monica Pollan for making sure all our technology was in order, there was no issues, everything went smoothly. We just finished up our spring enrichment. The kids had hip-hop dance lessons from Escape Academy and had aerobic and food-friendly awareness from the classroom elite. The kids absolutely loved it. The mother-child dance was a huge success. This year, it was held at IHM Hall so it could accommodate more people, and it did. The PTA did an absolutely amazing job, the food was catered by Rachels, pitchers were done by Mandy. It was just really great to see the children just letting their guard down a little bit and having fun and seeing them all dolled up. It was really, it was a really nice event. Our 4th grade math team, as I mentioned before, they had a math quiz bowl, they just finished that up right before spring break. They grouped kids based on different abilities and just practiced math questions to help prepare for the air test. We had a special guest in the final match, Mrs. Fuller, who announced the questions, the kids had a blast. They also did a homework incentive for the children. Students who completed 100% of their work for five weeks in math and reading, they had a chance to go over to the high school. They grouped the kids to their interests, like bowling, sports, robotics, music, and they toured the building. A special thank you to Mr. Kelty for allowing that to happen. The kids really were excited and are looking forward to what's to come when they get to that level. We got a couple of events coming up. Actually, we finished the STEM night here on Tuesday. It was wonderful. Big shout-out to Dr. Uppy and Dr. Young and all who prepared. There was the most popular thing right here, shooting balls to the kids. They had Soap Dog Box Derby, they had drones flying around. It was really nice to see a lot of people showing interest in the STEM program. We got a couple of events coming up. We have a VIP breakfast next week, May 3rd, 4th, and 5th. It's the first one since the pandemic, where we're inviting families that come in, and we're going to have about 300 people come in on Tuesday for a breakfast and check out our book fair. We got Bingo Night coming up next Friday. We have a few walking field trips to Handles. Camp Fitch for 5th grades, May 9th through the 13th. We got two groups coming out there, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and the next group comes out, and that's always a big success. Thank you for the high school kids being counselors, it's really nice to see them as such positive role models for our children. We got 5th grade graduation, we're going to livestream it for all the families. Thank you to Tom V., Zane, and Gina Cardillo for working with us to make that happen for our families. And then we wrap up the school year with Fun Day, and it's going to be held at the football field. We have different events and the kids have a blast, and hopefully Mother Nature doesn't make it snow or anything like that. Yesterday was Administrative Professionals Day, and I'd like to shout-out our secretaries, Joni Mitchell, Sandra Mitchell, and the pair of, Pat Gordon, Ms. Pat. They're always smiling, willing to help out in any way they can, and the office runs smooth because of them, and we're very fortunate to have such great people in our building.
Thank you. Austintown Middle School, Mrs. Cough.
Hi, everyone. Well, we had a pretty exciting month here at AMS. Today, we had four students that actually were honored at the Mahoning County Courthouse for their annual Holocaust commemoration program. They entered the writing contest, and from all the entries in Mahoning and Shenango Valleys, our students were among the best. We had first and 3rd place winners in the poetry division, and congrats to Alexis Bodis and Mia Foley, who had 2nd and 3rd respectively in the essay division. So we also have some very talented young readers and writers that came home with some awards from the YSU English Festival they attended on the 8th. We have Isabella Yuri and Dakota Castner, who placed 3rd in the limerick writing. We have Peyton Summers, 3rd in the art contest, and Isabella McCannis, who placed 1st in the Not So Trivial Pursuit Contest. So we're very proud of these talented young writers. In the world of sports, our boys' track team, not only are they undefeated, but we have nine right now who are currently qualifying for state, which is a huge, huge accomplishment considering they only take 24 in each division in the state. So that could change, but right now, we're pretty proud of these boys. Next Monday, they're going to compete in the Mahoning County Championship, so we're excited to cheer them on. Finally, as we enter this home stretch, we're working with our web crew to pick our new web leaders. Our web leaders are our 8th grade students who work with our incoming 6th graders to help bridge that transition into the middle school, which we know is a big transition coming into this big building. They now get their own piece of real estate, we introduce them to Lockers. So we are in the process of working with these web leaders and training them to be mentors to these 6th graders. We're preparing for 5th graders to come up and spend the day with us at AMS, and also for our 8th graders then to go to Fitch and work with Link Crew and participate in Crash Day. So in closing, now that we wrapped up state testing yesterday with math, you know, just a big shout-out to all of our teachers who are continuing to keep our kids engaged, provide instruction sprinkled in with some of these fun activities, and we have Fun Day coming up, thanks to PTA on May 26th, so hopefully Mother Nature does cooperate and we just keep plowing away for the next 21 days. So, thanks.
Thank you. Austintown Fitch High School, Mr. Del Torrio.
All right, everyone, we got great things going on at Fitch. As we wrap it up for the end of the year, we've got 15 days left for our seniors. We want to say congratulations and thank you to Mrs. Morton, who put on a fantastic National Honor Society induction program this year. This was her first year, so thank you to her. Mr. Klein and Mrs. Patton had a successful showing of The Music Man for the Spring Musical. Thanks to our counselors and Mr. Schavel, who ensured that we had a very smooth testing week and makeup week. Shout-out to our band, who's in DC right now, they're going to be playing at the Lincoln Memorial. Congratulations to Kristin O'Neill as she moves on to retirement. In the last 10 days, we've welcomed three new Falcons. Three of our staff members, teachers have had children. Mr. Klein had a boy, Ashley Mitchell had a boy, and Tori Chair had a girl. And we had a great athletic week this week. Both boys and girls' track teams won the county meets, and softball and baseball not only beat, but shut out Boardman. So it's a good week. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. I was going to pause for a second, if any of the students that we've already acknowledged if they need to leave with jobs or anything like that, if you guys, I mean, we would love for you to stay, but I know there was maybe a few conflicts. Okay, everybody's good? Yeah. It's fine, I understand. Okay, we'll move on to number nine, Treasurer's Consent Items. Upon the recommendation of the Treasurer, approve the following items, A through C by consent action.
Mr. Markham.
Yes.
Mr. Porter. Mr. Sherwood. Mrs. Smack.
Yes. I would like to acknowledge and thank the following for their donations. We received $1,000 anonymous donation for the Fitch Forensics Speech and Debate Team, $100 from Austintown Rotary Club for the Fitch RDE scholarships, $100 from Ruth Cole for Fitch RDE scholarships, $500 from Dawn Gentile American Legion Post 532 for Austintown Fitch High School Concert Choir, $500 from the VFW Post 4719, VFW Ohio Charities for Fitch High School Concert Choir, $1,000 from American Legion 9th District, Ohio Charities for Fitch High School Concert Choir, $102.51 from AMS Student Counsel for AMS Drama Department, $170 for Assistant AMS Principal Emily Grunary for her husband Matt's medical issues, $170 for Pam Burney, teacher at AMS, for husband Nick's medical issues, $4,949.50 from Austintown Fitch Baseball Boosters, 2 athletics for pitching machine and backstop padding, $500 from Harold and Kathleen Wilson for Fitch RDE scholarships, $50 from Beta Pi of Delta Cama Gamma for the Fitch RDE scholarships, $3,900 from Robertson Photography, $800 from antivirus youth education to Austintown Middle School, $300 from Austintown Education Association to Veterans Purple Heart, $50 from Deborah Blystone to James DeRamo Scholarship, $100 from Carol Kuchta for the AMS Pitchers with Santa. Thank you. Number 10, Superintendent's Consent Items. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve the following items, A and B by consent action. So moved.
Mrs. Smack.
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood.
Yes.
Mr. Markham. Mrs. Mock. Mr. Porter.
I want to acknowledge a few new hires. Is Caitlin White here? No. I want to acknowledge Natalie Lynn, who is- I want to acknowledge Natalie Lynn, who is our new, one of our new math high school teachers and our new varsity girls' basketball coach. I wanted a little speech about Natalie. Natalie's a 2017 Fitch grad. As a senior, Natalie volunteered her time to tutor a young student that was battling a life-threatening disease as a senior. So we're very, very proud that you decided to come back to Fitch as a teacher, and it'll be really cool next year because you'll be a first-year teacher at Fitch, and our student will be a senior. So thank you. Welcome aboard. Number 11. Oh, I'm sorry.
She's one of our bus drivers. Just resigned. Sad to see you go.
Thank you. Number 11, transfer for the 2022-2023 school year. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve the transfer of Michelle Porter from Grade Six Social Studies at AMS to District Gifted Intervention Specialist, which is a new position. Second.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mrs. Smack?
Yes.
Mr. Markham? Mr. Porter? Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Number 12, upon the recommendation of the treasurer, approve the resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. Revice Code Section 5705.34 and 5705.35. So moved.
Mrs. Smack?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Reduction in force, elimination of a position. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve by consent action the following board action. Reduction in force of the position at the end of the 21-22 school year as follows. Mark Litzinger as the Latin German teacher. Second.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Smack?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Administrative salary schedule. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve the revised administrative salary schedule as presented. Second.
Mr. Markham? Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Smack?
Yes.
Contracts for administrative personnel. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve the administrative contracts as follows. So moved.
Mrs. Smack?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Agreement, United Way Success by Six for the summer of 2022. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve the following agreement by and between the Austintown Local School District and Youngstown Mahoning Valley United Way. Whereas the United Way and the Austintown Local School District agree to enhance education opportunities to select pre-kindergarten students, therefore, the parties mutually agree to the scope of services as presented in the memorandum of agreement between the Austintown Elementary School and the Youngstown Mahoning Valley United Way. The United Way Success by Six initiative will commence on August 1st, 2022 and end no later than August 19th, 2022, with financial support for eight units at $4,500 each at a cost not to exceed $36,000 to be provided by the Youngstown Mahoning Valley United Way. So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Smack?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
abstained.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve the following agreement by and between the Austintown Local School District and Community Behavior Consulting to provide assessment, development, implementation, and training of behavioral and educational programs for children with special needs and for children who are typically developing. This agreement shall be effective commencing March 1st, 2022 and shall continue in effect until June 30th, 2022 at a cost of $3,500. The Governing Board of Education Services Center of Eastern Ohio to provide services and abilities during the term on this agreement in consideration of the following as requested by the Austintown Local School District, as those services set forth in Schedule A as presented by the 2022-2023 school year. This agreement shall begin on July 1st, 2022 and end June 30th, 2023. The Governing Board, the Education Service Center of Eastern Ohio, to provide additional services as presented for the 22-23 school year in accordance with Schedule A for the following. So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Smack?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve the following proposal from food service bids for the 22-23 school year from pizza products from Batko North LLC, DBA Papa John's Pizza, dairy products from Smith Foods Incorporated, and bakery products from Nichols Bakery. Second.
Mr. Markham? Mrs. Smack?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve the following memorandum of understanding by and between the Austintown Local School District and Youngstown State University College Credit Plus Dual Enrollment Program for the 22-23 academic year in accordance with House Bill 487 effective September 17th, 2014. YSU and the district desire to provide eligible students with the opportunity to take college courses for credit. So moved.
Mrs. Smack?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Approve Thursday, May 12th, 2022 at 3:00 PM in the central office for a work session to be followed by the regular session at 4:00 PM in the Austintown Middle School Cafeteria. Second.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Markham? Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Smack?
Yes.
Treasurer comment?
None.
Superintendent comment?
No, I don't.
Board comment?
Mine are just brief. Of course, I think everybody's sat here in the room tonight. We're in the homestretch, lots of great things happening. Please support your students during this time, and I would be remiss if I did not make mention that Teacher Appreciation Week is being celebrated the first full week of May, from May 1st through May 8th. And when teachers get extra credit they deserve, this is the week, for sure. But in my heart of hearts, teachers need all the credit in the world every day that they come to work, and I know there are a lot of teachers here in the room tonight. And teaching is a really time-consuming and challenging profession, so this is our chance and opportunity to say thank you so very much for what you do every day when you come to school. Thanks so much.
I just want to acknowledge, you know, we have such a great group of students, and in the last few board meetings, I think you can tell, you know, what we have going on in our school district. I also want to remind everybody that the Fitch Spring Choir Concert is Sunday, May 1st at 3:00 PM at the Fitch Concert Hall.
The Joneses come up, please? For the past few months that I've sat here, I've always tried to say that I truly appreciate people go out there and try and make an impact. Today, I have two people that I have the fortune of being close with that I know make an impact in this school. Before I get on to them, though, I want to say how special it is to sit here, month after month, and not only seeing people like the Joneses who make this impact, but this school in its entirety, making an impact in this community, in the valley, in the state of Ohio. I'm proud to sit here. I'm proud of each and every teacher, staff member, student, administrator. It's truly a humbling honor that everybody's out there on a daily basis making an impact. With that said, I'd like to introduce you to the Joneses. This is Allison and John. Allison was hired in Austintown in July of '07 and holds both an Integrated Science 7-12 license and a principal license. She was the head volleyball coach from '09 to 2012 and has been the ticket manager since August of 2013. She has successfully run the Josh Hetner Memorial Wrestling Tournament, the EOWL Tournament, sectional wrestling. Track officials assign her, District One District Track Manager and District One Regional Track Manager. John works, worked, works, you didn't resign, right? Works with the Austintown Fire Department for the last 28 years. He was also an EMT with Lane Life Trans for 23 years. He has worked with the Athletic Department since 1991. He mowed and painted the football field before the days of the turf field and was a director of football operations with Coach Anarala. He has successfully helped run all 29 Hetner Wrestling tournaments. Together, John and Allison have provided funds for various student athletes to purchase shoes and apparel. I've had the fortune of knowing John for 25 of the past 28 years, working closely with him, him being a mentor to me in my other profession and in training me and leading me down the right paths to grow up and be a good man. He's met the love of his life, you guys are perfect together, and I just wanted to introduce you, or everybody to you, and say what great people you are for the school district, and I can't think of anybody finer, and just from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Smack?
Yes.